All right. Good afternoon, buenas tardes, and welcome to the January 28, 2025, meeting of the Fiscal Management Committee. I would like to begin by giving my colleagues a moment to introduce themselves, starting on my right.
Good afternoon, Laura Stewart, and I'm representing District Four. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Pernil Savanna, student member of the board.
And I'm Carla Silvestre, Chair of the Committee. Can I get a motion to approve today's agenda?
We have approval.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Thank you. And while members of the committee have changed, I would like to acknowledge that the informational summary for the committee's November 18, 2024, meeting is posted to Board Docs. So, committee members, if there's any questions regarding this summary, it can be forwarded to board staff. Okay, we will begin with item 3.1, the Capital Improvements Program update. Before staff begin, I would ask you to first come forward and then introduce yourselves.
Hi, good evening. My name is Adnan Mamun. I'm the Deputy Chief of Facilities Management for MCPS. Wanted to come here and thank you for the opportunity to come and provide a quick, very quick update on our CIP. As you know, the County Executive Office has provided their recommendation out on January. So, we're in the process of reviewing the numbers that was presented in the County Executive's proposal, and we're kind of comparing that to our request. So, we're finishing that analysis. So, as soon as we have some update, we will inform the board if there are any recommendations for any, you know, future projects. But at this point, it does not look like that we will have to make any recommendations. But we're finishing that analysis. We have been meeting with the county budget stuff as well, just to understand all the numbers. So, that's where we're at at this point with the CIP.
Okay. Any questions from committee members? Ms. Zimmerman, do you want to say hello, introduce yourself?
Hi, Natalie Zimmerman, representing District Two. Happy to be here.
So, this is just part of our normal process, right? County Executive reacts to the proposed CIP, then you all make adjustments based on those actions, and then what comes next?
Yeah, so based on the analysis, if, and there are, you know, some scheduled meetings in February for us to come in front of the board, we will look through the analysis. And if we do have to make any recommendations, then we will ask for that work session to present our findings. And then we will keep the board updated. And if we have to go through that discussion process, that's what, you know, that's the next step in this, in the CIP process.
Okay. Well, thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have three reports relating to the MCPS operating budget. First up is item 4.1, Financial Monitoring Report. And I'd like to ask staff to please come forward and get us started by introducing themselves.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Ivan Alfonso Windsor, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Rob Riley, Deputy Chief of Finance.
Thank you. And just for my colleagues, I wanted us to go through this 101 on the financial report, because I see it as kind of the bread and butter of this committee, is us making sure that the operating budget that we approve, eventually in May, well, the final budget will be approved, that the role of this committee is to monitor the spending that's happening every month, and a monthly report is put forward. And this board needs to be very well-versed with that report, understand it inside and out, know what's going on, be able to talk to the public about where we are in the red, where we are not, where we're doing well, what the forecasting is for the year, where we're going to end up. And so, that's kind of the purpose of this short presentation, is just to give us an intro to the report, so that we're able to keep up with it throughout the year. So, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you. So, we will go, we are going to start over, going over, a little bit over the process that we use to financially, you know, part of our financial monitoring for, you know, our, for our finances, like Ms. Silvestre say, you know, this is, this is our fiduciary responsibility. We have to make sure that we're using the funds that are appropriated by the County Council and adopted by the budget, you know, the way they are intended. So, every month, starting in November, we produce a financial report. And the reason that we start in November as of October 31st is because really, the expenditures, the majority of the expenditures in the system is start or are encumbered in the months of September, once the teachers and the parent educators and the school staff returns to the schools. And that's when we start encumbering the majority of our budget. So, prior to that, it's just the, you know, the operational needs of the school system during the July and August month. So, when we look at this report, and when we talk about financial monitoring, we really monitor our local and estate funds. The grants and the enterprise funds are monitored as well, but separately. They're not part of this financial report that we do every month. And this really provides you a state of our finances, and also tell us where we are. So, the process is that every month, the offices let us know what they're going to spend through June 30th of that year. And then, the budget team reviews those projections and make adjustments based on trends that they're seeing and so forth. As you all know, we must not be in a deficit. The school system must end up in a positive. It's part of our fiduciary responsibility. Once we finish this report, we share it with the board, we share it with the County Council, and it's just to let you all know where we are, you know, in terms of our finances. So, this year, when we started, when we did the September 30th, as of September 30th, report, we identified a deficit. We identified that we would end up in a deficit at the end of this fiscal year, or the projected deficit, as we say. And that projected deficit at the time was about $5 million. And there were two components to that deficit mainly. It impacted several categories, but it was really the salary laps. When we made adjustments for salary laps, when we were projections, when we were developing the budget, we were very, actually, in a way, fortunate, because we were allowed, we were able to hire a lot more teachers and parent educators that we were originally projecting. So, we saw that there was going to be a deficit in our salary laps, along with special education expenditures. Special education needs, as you all have heard, this year are high, you know, as every year. But we needed a lot more money to meet those needs. And as a result, you all approved supplemental appropriation from our fund balance of $17 million. And that was not additional funding for special education. That was just to make sure that we were able to provide the services that we had guaranteed as of that moment. And so, since then, as soon as we found out about that, as you know, the superintendent implemented spending restrictions in central office only. This only impacted central office, to make sure that we would make some gains throughout the year, and ensure that we did not end in the deficit.
So, make sure I'm understanding. So, the $5 million deficit was caused because we were relying on laps, and then we didn't have it because we were filling positions.
Correct.
And then, because we had to spend to meet the needs of students for special ed, and that was more than what was budgeted.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, 100%. So, we are continuing our spending restrictions, and like every month, we're monitoring that very closely. And the next slide, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Riley, who is going to go over where we have been every month, as we, as we go through this financial monitoring report, and as you see every month when we submit the finances, status.
So, the way we're presenting it here is kind of unique. We usually don't present the monthly differences in expenditures, revenues, and fund balance. But this gives you an idea of kind of how we progressed by month to month. As Ms. Alfonso Windsor mentioned, as Dr. Taylor said, that negative $5 million, that technically, I believe that was the first time we were negative in expenditure projections ever. So, that's what we were working with. And that's, as Ms. Alfonso Windsor said, that's why we enacted the spending restrictions from the superintendent. So, this slide, and if you're following along in your monthly report, basically, it is broken up into three, three sections, revenue, expenditures, and then we talk about fund balance, too. So, those of you not familiar for fund balance, basically, that's where we end at the end of the year. So, that $17 million that we did a supplemental for special ed, that was largely from savings from the prior year. But if you do the math, the expenditure projection here in September was negative five. We've got that down to negative 3.8 due to the strategies that have been enacted to kind of get our spending in line. Revenues, a lot of times, that kind of stays the same. As you know, our revenues are, the county is our biggest revenue, and that's pretty much, we know what that is. We can kind of project that. Same, same thing for the state, for the most part. What these revenues are, are miscellaneous, are other revenue. So, portions of it is jewel settlement, some of its interest, and that's how we might see some revenue changes there. But when you do the revenue and the expenditure variances, you get to fund balance for the current year. That's going to be added to whatever's left over from last year, and then at the end, that'll be our fund balance at the end of this fiscal year. As Ms. Alfonso Windsor said, we do want to end the year in, you know, we don't want to be in a negative, and that goes for categories as well, too. So, one of the things that the county allows us is that at the end of the year, in, you know, once we're done with our June, we can go to the county and request a categorical transfer, that's called. So, this way, our categories, you know, don't end up in a deficit, because that's another requirement from COMAR. Next slide. So, as I said, we're showing progress in the expenditure side. We're showing increases in revenue. These are some of the ongoing deficit reduction strategies that we plan to use for the rest of the year. We just took a supplemental for special education, that's $17 million. That's going to get special education, which is category six, a better footing to go from now to the rest of the year. We're also identifying savings, you know, in each of the different areas. As Ms. Alfonso Windsor mentioned, the process is on a monthly basis, our budget specialists, along with people within the departments and divisions, look at what's spent so far, what the plan for projected spending is, and they come up with what our estimate is at the end of the year. That's part of that process. Any areas where we can identify savings, we're grabbing that and keeping that aside as savings, to help us to make sure that we don't end up in a deficit. Again, reducing spending in those areas will decrease the overall deficit. And then finally, the plan is to continue our central services spending restrictions in order to do the same.
Let me ask you a question. So, I'm not understanding how we could have $17 million left over from last year for a $17 million appropriation, yet have a $5 million deficit. How do those two things work together?
The $5 million deficit already took into consideration the $17 million supplemental for the school system, just to make sure that we continue to support the needs of the special education students. So, as you know, at the end of last year, we had some interest revenue that we had accumulated, that our plan was, it was part of the fund balance, and our plan was to use that to support our employee benefit plan. So, when we understood the needs in the special education, we used all of that funding, in addition to additional savings from last year, instead of to support our employee benefit plan, to support the special education requirements. But that $17 million is not additional, is what we had committed through September to support our special education. So, we were projecting the $5 million, we were already considering the $17 million supplemental.
So, to be clear, we were like closer to like $23 million?
If we, if, we would have been if we kept going with the special education spending the way we knew that we needed to go with the special education spending. If we wouldn't have had the $17 million for special education, we would have had to reduce the services in special education.
But you had $17 million left over from last year.
Correct.
And then immediately, when you started the fiscal year, you were spending more than what you had budgeted. Okay, so, it's a fiscal year.
Correct. So, and then, just keep in mind that whenever we have a fund balance for the school system, we can't spend it until the County Council reappropriates it. That's why we had to go through the $17 million supplemental. And the great thing for us, in a way, is the County Council can reappropriate funds from other agencies for any other purpose. It doesn't have to be for that specific agency. In the space of MCPS, any of our fund balance can only be used for MCPS. And if I may, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, continue, and then I'll ask.
No, I just want to indicate that unfortunately, you know, we still have issues with our employee benefit plan. So, our goal is to increase our fund balance for this year, so that we can support the employee benefit plan. Additionally, we've had a tough winter already in the month of January, so we have, you know, experienced some additional emergency expenditures, that we're really looking to see how can we offset those, to make sure that we don't go in the other direction moving forward.
So, when you want to build your fund balance, that means you're going to cut, cut along the way, so you can put some money away for later?
We're going to be working with our offices to keep identifying additional savings, so that we can increase our fund balance. And then, we will need to probably use some of it this year, you know, ask for another supplemental, for, if needed, for the employee benefit plan. It really does, one of the reasons we, the superintendent started the spending restrictions is because we really do need to have a little fund balance at the end of the year, not just because of the legal requirements, but that's also what helps us the following year, when we expand, you know, have emergency spending that we have to, you know, absorb. So, we need that buffer in order to be able to continue with the operations.
Supplemental is a misnomer, right? It's more like a...
It's really is a reappropriation of our fund balance, yeah. That is true. A supplement, a true supplemental is when we ask the County Council for additional funding, yes.
Okay, so I'm just following the trajectory of the fund balance here. And I see have, you know, September, October, November of the projected fund balance. So, you know, starting at 537K.
Do we go back to the previous slide?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, previous slide, yeah. So, what, what's the goal here? I see it's going in the right direction, but then you mentioned there might be other spending that we're going to have to dip back in. And so, and you said you want to end up with some. What, what's the goal?
So, we know we have additional spending for the emergency operations. We are, you know, working with the offices to identify additional savings to offset those expenses. The goal would be, I'm going to be honest, we haven't really determined a goal. We just have to work with the offices to absorb the most we can, or increase the fund balance the most we can, to put us in a really good place, especially if we need the funding for the employee benefit plan, while we don't stop any operations that are critical to our school system, right? We want to make sure that we continue operations that are critical, and we don't impact that. We are not impacting schools, but we want to make sure that our central services are able to be, are able to continue doing the work, you know, that they need to do.
We're in a little bit of new territory here. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we used $25 million in our assigned balance, which was kind of a forced saving to help balance the next year's budget. That's gone. So, we are dealing with smaller amounts. That's one of the reasons why you're seeing smaller amounts here. Instead of, normally, when we had that $25 million goal, we were at $29 million, you know, $30 million at this point.
Right. That makes sense to me. And I guess, as we move through the process, I think we, I would like to see where are the savings actually coming from? How is it impacting? I know you're saying it's not from school budget, but obviously, there, there's some pain involved, and I think we should be informed, where are those pain points? So, thank you.
If you have some examples, that would be great.
Sure. And we can, you know, we can see that when you look at the financial report at the, at the end, you'll see by category how those are changing, and what is causing those changes. But we can definitely, you know, point out those to you as we move along.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman?
I actually was hearing the same, oh, we're trying to keep, you know, these like critical functions, blah, blah, blah. I was also looking, you know, especially for the sake of the public, what are some of the examples, the ways that you're reducing spending or finding additional savings?
So, when we do spending restrictions in certain central services, the first thing that we really look at is any travel for professional development that is not critical, right? That can be postponed for, for other years. We're looking for, you know, supplies and materials, you know, if you can afford not to purchase something that, you know, you can do through other means, you know, that you can, you know, that's a savings. The other piece in central services where we are identifying savings is, we are not advertising or filling positions this year unless they get a special approval in central services for those positions. And sometimes, one of the strategies that we use is, you can fill the position, but you can fill the position after a one-month vacancy, because that will give you additional savings towards your, your fund balance. So, some, those are some of the strategies that we're using.
And it's not pain-free, because there's a lot of positions that support schools that are officially central office, but they're going out to schools.
You are correct. Spending restrictions are not pain-free, because we are asking for a budget that we need. So, we really need, everything that we have added to our budget is critical to our functions. It's just, it is not pain-free. We have to make tough decisions, and that's where those tough decisions come in.
Am I remembering correctly that math coaches are central office?
Math coaches are central office, but I'm happy to report that those are all filled. So, and those would be considered critical.
We're just giving folks an example. You don't think of it that way, but...
It is, yes. And they're budgeted in central office, and they go out to the schools. But yes, they spend the majority of their time at the school supporting students, yes, 100%. So, every single, we, we consider a lot of positions, central services, like, you know, the bus drivers, the bus attendants, you know, the instructional assistants that support, you know, schools. But those are really, you know, student-facing positions, even though they are reflected in our central office's budget, yes. in our central office's budget, yes.
Ms. Savarna?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking at the slide again, and so when, when we're looking at the expenditure projection of negative 3.8 million here, is that after the fund balance, after we use what the fund balance is here, or is that just assuming not using the fund balance?
So we start from zero, right? When we start projecting this, we base it on what our budget is. So when you're looking at September 30th, that was our projected deficit as of June of 2025. And then, so you can see how we have made progress. We went from 5.1 through November 30th of three, you know, 3.8 million dollars. That is, that's starting from zero, that's not accounting for the fund balance that we have as of last year.
Okay, got it. So, so if we were to continue on the path, even if we were in a, like, like the expenditure projection was negative 3.8 million at the end of the year, we would have the fund balance to cover it based on what we have right now? Because that, this fund balance reflection is of right now, correct?
That is as of right now, that's correct. So yes, so we, we would go for a supplemental, because we're getting an additional 7.8 million dollars in revenue, right? So we would go for a supplemental of, let's say, $4 million to make sure that that expenditure projection gets zero, and then we would have the leftover as fund balance for FY, to start FY '26 with.
We're hoping the fund balance number is going to increase over time, because this is very tight for the $3.6 billion budget, as you guys know.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at, what, like 200,000 for 3.6 billion, like?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's the best number to have.
Every little bit helps, so, you know, we look for every single penny that we can save.
Yeah, I was going to go back to one more time, and can you just explain to me like what the, the revenue changed, like how that comes to be?
So revenue change here, it's, it's impacted by several things. One of them is the Jules settlement, that we're getting payments, you know, every year. It's a three-year. That's the, the smallest amount here. The other piece is our interest revenue. So our controller department has really worked on, working with our banks to get us a better deal. So in the last couple of years, we have received significant interest revenue. And that's a belief, it's about $3 million. Don't quote me on that, I have to look it up in the financial report. The other aspect of this is, we are receiving additional reimbursement from the state, from the state for our non-public placements. So that is another aspect of this fund balance. So, you know, and when we had the board session the other day, we talked about how our, the governor's budget represent a reduction from 70% to 60% on what we get for reimbursement from the, for special education placements. So this year, we have actually received a little bit more than we have projected. I think we have received another $2.3 million. So that is not something that we have to reappropriate or have to go to the county council for, because that is really just a change in the reimbursements of where expenditures are for special education. So those are the three main components when you look at the revenue change.
Okay, yeah, and then just to be clear, like when we're talking about that increased, you know, revenue for non-public placements, that's still money that we have to, like, that's only 50% of whatever the cost is, so we still have to put, put out a big chunk of that.
Correct. That just means that when we build the budget, we projected that we were going to get 19.1 million dollars in reimbursement. So our revenue for FY '25 budget, when we appropriated, was 19.1 million dollars, and we have come up to about 20, you know, 22 million dollars in reimbursements for that.
Because we've had more students?
Absolutely. You know, our special education has increased from 12, below 12% prior to the pandemic to almost 14% now. So yes, so those public placements, you know, do require more reimbursement.
More revenue, but more expenses as well.
Yeah, 100%.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Stewart?
I know it just sounds, I don't know if this is obvious or not, or just for the public, so, I mean, it seems, like, tell me if I'm wrong, but the revenue change minus the expenditure projection is the fund balance? Thank you.
No, that is correct, yes, absolutely.
I think next, we wanted to go through the last financial report, so that you can walk us through the tables, and everybody should have a copy of the last financial report.
Yeah, so this should sound familiar, because what we just went through is, you're going to see this in the detail in these pages. So the first page, we're just talking about the attachment. So we do a, a special slide for revenue that speaks to the changes in the projected revenue that we were speaking about. And then we look at expenses in a couple of different ways. We look at which of our categories are in a, in a deficit, and then we look at our expenses on a month-to-month basis over, over years. It helps us project, and we think it helps the, you know, the users of this to kind of see where we're at year to year. And then finally, we look at what we spend by month. So as Ms. Alfonso Windsor said, we can kind of get a good projection on what that monthly spend's going to be, based on what, based on historic, so.
So for revenue, what do you consider revised budget versus original budget?
Any change in projection. So we mentioned interest. So we had a budget in there for interest, but based on, you know, we were using a sweep account, we're, we're trying to put any money that we have available into savings accounts to earn that interest. So the projection changed over time.
Okay.
So that, that's first page. Second page.
Which, which attachment are we on?
I'm sorry?
Which attachment are we on?
Well, I was just going to page two, showing the bottom grid, because that kind of goes...
Oh, you're on the, the narrative of the...
No, I think, I think you were saying from attachment one to attachment two.
Oh, attachment two.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, page two, I just kind of wanted to show you that grid at the bottom of page two, not the attachments.
Oh, okay.
That gives you a, a pretty good summary of where we're at. So we were, we were talking about our original starting fund balance. So that we always show, which was the 18, and then we show the projected surplus revenue, and then less the projected expenditure balance. That gave us the 22,898. But from that, since we did that supplemental, that came from fund balance, we had to subtract that. And we're also making the assumption that we're going to eventually assign some of that fund balance for spending on the Jules settlement that we recorded as revenue. So that's where you get that bottom line of unassigned fund balance of the 3.9, $4 million, which ties to the, that summary we showed you. So as for the attachments, attachment one, that, that's going to give you detail of revenues. So we break that out by the source, which is county, and you'll see there's no projected variance there. We know what we're going to get from the county, and that there's not going to be any change in that. The state, we were just talking about that we had increase in non-public. So along with that comes increase in expenses as well, too, but we do show the, the revenue side as well. And then federal really kind of stays the same, too, because if that's grants, the, the revenue's going to be offset by equal amounts of expense. So that's usually just a zero variance. And then finally, other. And that's where you're going to find the Jules settlement, we had an increase in summer school revenue compared to budget, and then we had a surplus of interest income. If you look down there, we kind of put these on there, but we rarely record a variance. These are our enterprise funds and our supported projects or grant funds, which, as I noted before, that's going to be the zero balance, so there's no variances there. Attachment two, that's a detail of our expenditures, again, by category. So this is where you can go to look at the changes from the prior month. And also, that's broken up by object. So category one, administration, you can kind of see where we did for salaries and wages, contractual services, and then you can kind of see how we adjusted our projection. And then the explanation, or what we base that revised projection on, is in the right. That's attachment two. Attachment three is just basically what we're showing in attachment two, but in a picture format, so you can kind of see at a glance at what point different categories were either in a surplus or in a deficit.
Which one is attachment three? Oh, the, the bar graphs.
The bar graph, yes. Attachment four, another bar graph, and what this is showing is our year-to-year change in expenditure projections. So this is where we're talking about, the very first, or the fifth column there, shows that negative 5.1. Again, first time, that's kind of, first time that we kind of were showing that. And then if you follow along, October, November, you can kind of see that going up. And as I noted before, the expenditure projections were higher in previous years because of that built-in $25 million that was kind of a forced savings that we were doing to balance the subsequent year budget. And then finally, attachment five, that's the one where we're just showing percent of year completed. So we can kind of, kind of look by category, and they're pretty, pretty steady when you look, but if there is any anomalies, we can kind of go in and research that of why that might be more spent than it was in, you know, in prior years. And that, that should be it for the attachments.
I just want to make a clarification. The revised budget is, it will change when we get supplementals. So our beginning budget is what you adopted in June, when we get the 17 million supplemental that the county council actually just took to public hearings today, then that will be the revised budget, would indicate that additional $17 million.
And then, once the budget is approved, and you have your categories, and you have an emergency where you have to spend, you have to find money, you need to find $5 million to fund something, what flexibility do you have? You're going to have to pay for it, you have to steal from one to, rob Peter, pay Paul. What are the rules in terms of where you can pull that money from?
So the county council, we have to reflect the money where, where the correct category we're going to spend it. So what the county council allows us to do at the end of the year, and, and you know, you see this, I believe in August, is, we look at our budget by categories, and you're going to see minuses and positives, and then they allow us to re- offset. So if category three, for example, that has always been our biggest surplus, which is not this year, has a $30 million surplus, but you had emergency, you know, and snow emergencies, weather emergencies that we're reflecting category 10 with a negative $10 million, they would allow us, they will reappropriate or approve our budget by doing a transfer from category three to category 10. And they always do it for us at the end of the year, they don't do it by my month, they let us proceed with our expenses as needed, and then just do that reconciliation, you know, at the end of the school year.
Yeah, and that's different when you go district by district. Some districts actually do a categorical transfer if they're aware of a negative. One of the reasons that the county lets us do that is because of this actual report. If we're reporting to the board and the council that we know that we're going to be in a deficit, that's kind of allows the county to give us that permission.
So.
This, this way is easier for us, rather than going through the categorical transfers on a, you know, bimonthly basis.
Ms. Savarna?
So this, this is different than, than the $75 million salary lapse in turnover that we have in our budget right now, correct?
So yes, so the 75 million lapse in turnover, you know, like Dr. Taylor talks about, is the most difficult, you know, portion to explain, because what really is, is we're double, double budgeting. So we know that our, our salaries are going to be, let's just use a small number, $1 million, and we know that we're not going to fill, let's say, 3% of the vacancies, and that, 3% of the positions, and that's 100,000. We really cut our budget by 100,000, and we budget 900,000 for positions. So when you look at our budget, salary lapse has already been, is already being factored into the amount that we requested from the county council.
Okay, yeah, so the transferring at the end of the year, nothing to do with that, that's just a matter of, we overspend in one category, underspend in another, and split the difference?
Mr. Lockman, did you tell me that we're going to go deep into the, the salary turnover, the lapse in turnover in March? Is that correct?
That is something that we talked about as a, as a potential option for discussion for, for this group.
Okay, sounds like fun.
Well, just as, as a, as a mechanism for, at that point, the committee's next meeting is March 20th, so at that point, the budget will have been approved, and we'll be with the county, and we'll be further along in the year, and could have some additional updates on that, if that's something the committee wants to discuss.
Just in the, in the revenue section, things like food services, real estate, field trip, entrepreneurial, instructional television, that's just, that's not really revenue, is it? It's just think, money that we collect and then we get...
Those enterprise funds, technically, from an enterprise fund perspective, that is revenue within that fund, but there's offsetting expenditures in that fund, too. So we don't really, you know, consider, and it's, it's not part of our fund balance in the operating budget, but we show it here, I think partially because we want to tie out to the original budget and the revised budget at the bottom, which includes those other enterprise funds and special revenue fund.
What's an example of an entrepreneurial activity?
Field trips. Field trips are an entrepreneurial activity on the side of transportation. So as you know, you know, the schools have to pay, you know, for the mileage, for the gas, for the bus drivers when they request a bus from our transportation, and that is revenue that is coming into that particular fund for field trips. Another revenue is food services. It's the money that we're getting in reimbursements from the civil government, plus à la carte items. That's our revenue that comes in for our food services enterprise fund, which is, it's like a business, right? When, when we're looking at enterprise funds, it's like a business-run activity, in a way, it's self-funded.
So the field trips is the money you collect from the families for a field trip? Is that what you meant?
So the schools collect the money from the families, or if they get a grant and they want to pay for that bus through the grant, they have to pay their field trip fund, our enterprise fund, for, for, for those activities. So whether it's the money coming from our students, or the money coming from, into that fund, is considered a revenue source.
And I had mentioned that we don't show variances, but each of these funds do actually have a fund balance. You'd have to find that in our annual financial comprehensive report, but each of those enterprise funds have a, have a fund balance as well.
So we, we talked about these funds being self, self-sufficient, so does that mean like we're, we're putting in little to no money in the operating budget for them, or does it just mean that, that?
Yeah, that's a good point. So the definition of these enterprise funds is there is no operating fund infusion. It, it's either going to be from fees, or from, you know, charges, or food charges for food service. So, but there can't be really any operating budget contribution there.
Okay, and then on the flip side of that, it also means, you know, if we're talking about, if, like, the money can't be shifted from, from like food services or the field trip fund back into the operating budget to fund something else?
That is correct. So the money has to be used for the purpose that is intended. And that is, that is one of the reasons, you know, when we talk about universal meals and the cost of universal meals, the food services fund for MCPS enterprise fund, it is, like we just talked about, self-funded. So if we go that route, either the state or the county would have to fund that, and it also becomes part of our maintenance of effort as well, from the state. Any enterprise funds, or any of this, the field trip fund, the camera, you know, the pass-through for our buses, for the bus cameras, all of those are outside of maintenance of effort.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, and that's an example of the entrepreneurial, of one of the funds in, one of the activities in the entrepreneurial is the school bus camera.
Could you take us to attachment two and show us where, how special ed, the, the increase in spending, overspending in that category is reflected in this table? Is, is that the right attachment, where we would see that?
Yeah, so that, that category in special ed, it did, the deficit decreased a little, but still we're showing a deficit in the current year report of 5.5 million dollars.
It's category six.
Category six, yeah.
So you budget, authorize 417 million?
Correct, yeah.
And then you have actual expenditures?
Yeah, those are actual, and then we look at the encumbrances, which is an accounting term, but that's going to be a future expense.
So I just want to specify that the $17 million are already included as part of the budget for category six in that. So the $5 million deficit is already, assuming that we're going to get a $17 million supplemental for special education.
So if we, if we looked at this number before we made that appropriation to county council, it would be 17 million higher?
That is correct.
Ms. Stewart?
Category 12, fixed charges is another place where there's projected deficit. Can, can you talk about category 12? Because it says fixed charges.
Correct, so... Correct, so it is fixed charges because all our benefits, our employee benefit plan is reflected in category 12. Our FICA is reflected in category 12. The other item that is reflected in category 12 is tuition reimbursement because that's a benefit to our employees. So that deficit reflected there, it is a combination of a little bit of tuition reimbursement and FICA. We are not, the category 12 would not reflect any deficit in our employee benefit plan, in the employee benefit fund, plan, fund that we have been referring to, that we know that we're going to have a deficit. So we have our budget for our benefits and we have an employee benefit fund, which is separate. What we do is we take the money from our category 12 fixed charges benefit and we move it into the fund or we pay into the fund as expenses come in. So it's, it's a little bit, the tracking there is going to be a little bit different because there is the fund that is the one that is in desperate need of additional. And, and then there's the operating budget aspect of that category 12 benefits. Does that make sense? I'm not sure I'm.
A little bit.
So, so let me try again. So let's say our benefits is about $464 million for our employee benefit plan. The employee trust fund, we ended up in a $65 million deficit. So think about like your bank account. Let's say that this month you have, you overspend by $10, $10. And then next month only $20 come in, into your bank account. So you're still at a deficit of minus 10. So think about it that way. You have the budget for employee benefits here and then our, as our expenditures hit or are, are charged to our employee benefit fund, then we transfer budget from our operating budget into that fund. Once our, once our budget, you know, hit, I mean, we have, when we have spent our budget, then we cannot keep transferring that money into our employee benefit plan. And that's where, you know, we really have to look at where we are and to make sure that we're able to absorb all our expenses prior to June 30th.
And we've been putting that employee benefit plan in this monthly financial report, but we discussed that, that, that kind of warrants a whole meeting up by itself. So that's why we didn't mention that today.
I understand.
We're working on it.
Yeah.
We're really working on it, you know, it's going to take a combination of budget, like we have discussed, a combination of agreement with us associations that we're working on right now. And also identifying, you know, working with, with our vendors to identify, you know, how we can reduce some of the expenditures.
Thank you for explaining other, appreciate it.
Ms. Zimmerman?
So I'm going to go across a couple different meetings. So we've heard Dr. Taylor say quite a few times that the proposed budget for fiscal year '26 is reflective of what we're actually spending. So it seems like a lot of the things that you're describing, you're saying, well, we're spending more here. And that's kind of the reality that it's, you know, we're, we're asking for more money for other things. We're asking council for more. So it seems like this is kind of some of the nitty gritty of what he's explaining. Is that accurate to say?
That is 100%. Basically, as he said, you know, the budget that he's proposing is really true enough what our needs are and what our expenditures are. So we are spending, you know, if we were looking at our real expenditures without the expenditure restrictions, we would spend a lot more than, than we have in our budget, you know. And as I think Ms. Stewart, you know, asked at the last session, you know, in the past, we had $400 million, you know, in S R grants. And that's really what got us through the last three or four years and we no longer have that funding. So yes, it's true enough, our budget to what our needs are for FY '26.
I don't understand why the special ed line doesn't reflect the $17 million. What's the use of that chart if I'm not seeing the full picture?
So when we, we have to project based on what we know with the steps that we've taken, what we're going to end up at the end of the year. So if we were reflecting the $24 million, let's say, you know, deficit without the $17 million, it wouldn't really truly, you know, reflect where we're going to end up at the end of the year. We can make changes, you know, if that's, you know, if that's what the board feels that we need to do. Once we get by the next board, by the next financial report, once we have that appropriation, you're going to see that budget increasing, which is really, you know, where you're going to see that additional $17 million. But our projection really reflects where we would be, you know, assuming that $17 million, which we know is part of our fund balance and the county council, you know, should reappropriate for us. But we can take that into consideration if you want us to reflect it differently, yes.
So for attachment five, for example, special education. What do I need to know from these, from that attachment five? Like, what is this telling me? How much is spent per month? Like what, what do I need to look out for when things are going well? And what do I need to look out for when things are not going well? As special ed, since we know that had a lot of activity, I'm assuming that I should be able to flag something and I'm not, I'm not seeing it.
So let me walk you in September. So the budget right now is consistent, right? Because we haven't received the $17 million, you know, we haven't reflected in here the $17 million appropriation. So it's $417 million. In the first month in September, we spent $36.3 million. That is the actual expenditure. But if you look right below, it says spend encumbered by month, 418 million. This reflects the salaries for all our special education employees already encumbered through June 30th. When you get to the last line for November, we have continued to spend, when you see between 417 and 423, you're going to see that $5 million difference, you know, that, that we have in our budget. The $5 million additional expenditure that we're projecting that we're going to have, you know, by the end of the year.
Okay. And what percentage of special education salaries are not, positions are not filled on average?
So this year, they actually, you know, we are, we are in a lot better place than in prior years. I think we, the majority of our vacancies are sitting in paraeducators right now. I think we have a little bit over 100 paraeducator vacancies right now. Most of our teacher positions have been filled this year. I don't have the numbers with me right now, but we can look at that. It's part, something that we track every month so we can indicate, you know, we can let you know and/or we can add it to the report as needed.
Would that be, would that be under the category six?
Absolutely. Anything that is, that is a special education specifically would be category six. Because remember that a special education has its own MOE. So we have to meet MOE for a special education in addition to the overall MOE that we have to do for the system. So every year, in order to meet the federal guidelines for a special education, we must spend more than the prior year, at least the same or more than the prior year, in order to meet MOE for a special education. So in order for tracking all the expenditures, that's what we, what everything that is aligned with special education is budgeted under category six.
Okay, so the paras that are not filled, that's giving you a little bit of savings.
But that's where the salary lapse is coming in and that's why we need those additional $17 million, correct?
Thank you, Ms. Savarino?
Yeah, so from, for the, for previous budgets, like, I mean, we, we always hear like, oh, like, like special education might be cut or is cutting. And so can you explain that in terms of like what that means from the budget perspective? And then also from the maintenance of effort perspective? Like, can you, like, if we're cutting it in the budget, but we still have to spend this much amount? Like, is that just basically saying, well, we know we're going to go over what we're spending in our budget?
So a special education have always, the budget for a special education, at least over the last five years, have always increased. I think what you're hearing is it has been reduced from their original ask. So we know that when the superintendent recommends a budget and the board adopts the budget, you know, in February, we might budget 400 million, let's say for a special education, an increase of 25 million from the prior year. At the end of the year, you know, when it might result in budget cuts and so on, we might have reduced that budget by 5 million, but they still received an increase from the prior year. It's just that it might not meet all the needs that the special education students, you know, have.
Okay, I understand. So we're talking about cuts to the increases, okay.
Mr. Lockman?
Or just to, to maybe clarify, it could be hearing about cuts or changes to specific elements of special education programs, but not overall special education funding. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes, thank you. Okay. Well, thank you so much for that overview. I know you put out the, the report monthly, but, and then we see it in our consent items every month as well. Yeah, so thank you, thank you for that overview and looking forward to going deep onto the salary laps next time. We'll be ready. That'll be an interesting conversation.
So maybe just to confirm, based on conversation, in terms of how, in this case, the 17 million supplemental appropriation or in future cases appropriations like that are reflected. I think, just want to make sure, understand the, the committee's position. We would continue to do that in the manner that it, that it has been reflected here, but it will look different once, the total budget number, once it is approved.
That is correct. And, you know, if the committee decides, we can put an asterisk or put a note, you know, when we make those kind of, so that is very clear what, you know, the assumptions are when we're looking at these projections.
But I get the feeling that because it had been, we haven't gotten the, what's the term?
So it has not been appropriated yet or approved by the county council, but we are already accounting for that funding when we're looking at our projections. But the budget has not changed.
But the, it, it's reflected to you on this table. It's not like it hasn't happened yet, so it's going to appear in next months.
No, what is going to appear in next month is when you look at the, at the tables at the end, where you see the, the original budget and the revised budget, the revised budget is going to have an additional $17 million.
We're showing in that grid on page two because we know it's coming. Same thing with the Joel's spend.
Thank you. Okay, next up is item 4.2. We're going to get an update on state funding for fiscal year '26 operating budget.
Thank you. Can I have the PowerPoint? Yes. So, you know, as, as, MCPS is probably one of the LEAs, the first LEA to recommend their budget or put out its budget in the fiscal year. And as a result of that, because we have to send it to the county council by March 1st, when we're, when the superintendent is recommending his budget, we just don't know yet what the state aid is going to be like. So we use projections. And, you know, the state aid has many factors and we'll go over that. But the governor releases the, the state aid the third Wednesday in January. And that's when we first get a chance to look at, you know, what we're going to get. The proposal is based on existing law, but we know that they're going, you know, the general assembly over the next month or so is going to be looking, you know, at the different proposals from the governor. And that might reduce our funding, you know, for MCPS. But we thought that we would go, we would start going over the components of state aid just so that everyone understands, you know, what is state aid we received and how it has changed from FY '25 to what the recommended, what was indicated in the recommended budget by the superintendent. We're still analyzing and we have a meeting, a technical assistant meeting this week with MSDE to really understand what our state funding is going to be like. But we can go over it, you know, as, as we go through all these elements. So the biggest portion of our, of our state aid is really our foundation grant. And that is a per pupil allocation. And as you can see in FY '25, we received $426.2 million. In FY '26, where we identified or we thought we were going to see an increase of about $5 million or $4 million, we are probably going to see an additional increase there. But we're, but if the general assembly, the, the governor recommendation passed, this is going to be impacted as well by that collaborative planning time. There would be a reduction in our foundation formula. Camporal wage increase is another portion, it's another component of state aid. And this accounts for, you know, areas of high cost of high, you know, the cost of living is high, like Montgomery County. So we get 37, 34.7 million. And as you can see, it's a decrease from last year to this year that we're projecting. Because, keep in mind that a state aid is relative to all the other LEAs in terms of student enrollment and in terms of wealth, and it's also a weighted formula. So we never really can predict what we're going to get because it's comparative to the other areas, LEAs in our system. Limited English proficient, we are seeing an increase in, in the, in the allocation for this portion of state aid. And this has to do with our students that are identified as, as E M L students. Compensatory education, about two or three years ago, we got a huge increase in compensatory education. We used to be at about 130 million and we had a large increase. That's when the direct certification for students that are, were receiving farms, the state started using the direct certification. So we had a lot of more students being represented with farms. So that's why you're seeing an increase. And this year we have an increase in our number of farms, of students receiving farms. The next one is, we talked a little bit about, is a students with disability formula. So the state basically is giving us, we're seeing an increase in here of about $9 million, we think from the, from a state aid for FY '26, above the $81 million. That is, that, that the superintendent projected, that we projected in the superintendent's budget. As you can see, our special education budget is $434 million. And that's only the special education, the category six. That doesn't include the benefits associated with that budget. And yet we're only receiving really $80 million from the state. So the local share of special education is quite high. And that is something that, that we have been looking at. Just to give you an example, if you look at the foundation formula before, between FY '23 and FY '26, the state increased the foundation formula by 7.92%. Yet the local share that is, that is, that has to go along with the, with the state aid has increased by 9.12%. So the local share and the reliability on the local funding has increased substantially, you know, in the last few years. Transportation as part of state aid is mainly for our, our special education students. That's where we see the $56 million. And then the reimbursement right above that, I'm sorry, I skipped that. That's what we're talking about before, is $19.1 million. That's the revenue we are, we're assuming. But this year we have received a little bit more and that's what we're seeing reflected in the financial report. This is what, if the governor's recommendation moves forward, this is where we're going to see again another decrease because this represents a 70% reimbursement rate. He is recommending a 60% reimbursement rate and for FY '27, a 50% reimbursement rate. So between '25 to '27, we could see a 20% decrease in this part of the state aid. And then we have received for Blueprint for Maryland's Future for everything combined is about $40 million. We're going to see a big increase in this, in the concentration of poverty and community schools. As you know, we are getting an additional, or the state has identified an additional 22 community schools for FY '26, an increase of, in local aid of $11 million. But that also comes with a local share. So the, the local LEAs have to provide an $8 million additional for those community schools. So that is going to be an impact to our budget. The components of blueprint that are part of the state aid are the career ladder and national board certified teacher salaries. And that is all embedded in our compensation agreements, right? And, and as you know, part of the blueprint was making sure that our teachers would get paid more than $60,000. And we, the first year teachers are starting salary $60,000 and we're way above that, you know, to where we needed to be. So we're in a good place there, but the investment in that is substantial. In pre-kindergarten is another area where we're seeing that between FY '23 and FY '26, the state contribution has increased by 12.20, I'm sorry, 22.8%, but the local contribution has increased by 148%. So we are basically getting, I believe, $30 million from the state for pre-K. Our pre-K budget is over $30 million in order to meet the needs, you know, that, that we see forth. Concentration of poverty, we just talked a little bit about that. Those are our community schools and we know that we're going to see a bidding increase for FY '26. It has been confirmed that as of right now, the governor is recommending a freeze on community schools and concentration of poverty for FY '27 until they determine what, you know, the, the impact is. We, we're not sure yet what that freeze means, is that they're going to. We're not sure yet what that freeze means, is that they're going to freeze it at the level that we are now, or are they just not going to assign additional community schools? Because if they freeze it at the level that we're now, we know, you know, there is, you know, cost of living keeps increasing, there's inflation, so that is going to put us a little bit, you know, behind on that. College or career readiness, that's another portion, and this is where dual enrollment, you know, our APIBs, and we know that the Montgomery County delegation is going to recommend some changes, you know, to that aspect of it. We'll see if we're going to mainly support our FARM students in that area, but, you know, that is, you know, that's still to be seen. Career advising is our work with WorkSource Montgomery and positions in our system that supports students of all ages moving forward. The transition, transitional supplemental instruction and blueprint coordinators, those are small pieces of our blueprint, and the transition grant is going to go away, you know, in about two years. And that is just to help us transition, you know, into the blueprint. There has been additional funding, that has, it's about $5 million that has supported us transitioning into the blueprint. And then, the transitional supplemental instruction that supports our K through 3 readers. And then, we have been talking about it, there's the local share component of blueprint, which is substantial, because everything has a local share. Basically, for Montgomery County Public Schools, because of a wealth factor, we get about 30% of the blueprint funded through state aid. The rest is really local share from our state government, from our local government.
Could you go back to the previous slide? You mentioned the governor's reduction, recommended reductions. In transportation was one of the examples. This is based on just his...
Not transportation. The, it's gonna, the program, the collaborative planning, if that reduction goes through...
Could you explain that?
Collaborative planning is something that we've been working on to ensure, you know, that our teachers, you know, have planning time, that they're able to collaborate, obviously. The blueprint takes it, you know, a lot farther than we are at that point, but Montgomery County is one of the LEAs that are farther in that aspect of the blueprint. If they put a stop on it right now, and one of the thoughts behind it is that there's not enough staff to keep hiring and stuff to, you know, to get to where they want to be in career ladder, that is going to have an impact on our foundation grant, on our comparable wage index, on our English learners and on compensatory education. They're holding a special education harmless, and that could be a reduction of approximately $15 million.
So, by pausing the collaborative planning, it's gonna...
The funding.
By pausing that funding, it's going to hit all of these categories?
Yes, because remember that the blueprint funding is embedded in almost every aspect of the state aid.
Okay.
It's not just the specific restricted line items for blueprint. The formula is embedded in all of these components of state aid. So, we're getting blueprint funding. For example, the foundation grant includes a little bit of the funding for the foundation grant is to get to that $60,000 teacher salary.
Okay.
Increase.
And can you remind me the total impact of this decision in dollars?
About $15 million.
15?
1-5, yes, $15 million. So, right now, the way we're looking at state aid, we're going to get, for FY '26, approximately $53 million more than for FY '25. But that would be reduced by $15 million as a result of the collaborative teacher planning, if that goes through, you know, in the general assembly. The other portion of the general assembly, if it goes through, is the, I'm sorry, I just lost that train of thought.
Pension contribution?
Well, yeah, the pension contribution, it's one of them. That is going to be about $21.9 million. We actually have that amount, but it's not, that is just a shift, right, from the state to the local. But the other piece that would impact us here would be the reimbursement formula for students with disabilities. That would be decreased by 10% by reducing the reimbursement from 70% to 60%. That is another aspect. We don't have yet what that full aspect will mean for MCPS, but I'm estimating between $3 to $4 million.
And so, that pension, sorry.
Go ahead.
So, that pension contribution shift impacts us greater than most other counties in Maryland, because we have the highest number.
Correct. So, 20, the total reduction, the total shift, the state is shifting about $93 million of the pension from the state to the local governments, and our impact is $21.8 million. So, yes, and again, that's the impact this year. As salaries keep increasing and so on, that is, you know, will continue to increase.
Ms. Stewart?
I wanted to ask about the, I believe, there was $11 million in aid coming in to increase community schools, but you said then we have to come up with 8 million. And so, is that reflected in the budget? So, it's not, so this is 8 million more that would have to go into budget, but are we still kind of waiting on this, or is this a for sure?
So, we are, that is something that we would have to include, you know, when the board is, you know, is adopting the budget. Because if we know that we are going to get an additional 22 schools, that the state is going to give us an additional $11 million, we have, the local share is mandatory to increase for community schools. But that's where, again, we're getting $53 million projected, $53 million of aid. That's where we're trying to figure out those numbers, you know, before the superintendent comes to, you know, to recommend to the board, based on these changes as a result of the state aid. Those will be built in, so that you would understand what the impact is.
And so, that's not, I know you talked about other money and losing 15 million of it, so this is a whole nother layer.
So, think about it this way, you know, like we discussed on Thursday, an additional 53 million, reduce 21 million of that, right? Reduce another $8 million, and take out another $15 million. We're probably going to be even. We're going to increase the revenue by $53 million, but our expenditures are going to be substantially higher as well, just to meet with the mandates that we have.
Okay. So, we have to be ready. Thank you.
Okay, let's finish up with the last slide.
Yeah, so, this is, we're just showing you the timeline, just on Mr. Severna's point. So, you know, pension, we have a separate pension fund, but when we talk about that pension shift, it really gets back to category 12, what we were talking before. That's one of our fixed charges, so that's why it's a direct effect on our operating budget. But as for this timeline, the bottom, you've seen many times before, that's our board timeline. What we thought we'd add here is the timing of the state funding. So, in January, that's when the LEAs receive our draft state aid. Many years, there's not too much change to that. This year, obviously, there's a lot of balls in the air. So, this, you know, when, we might not find out till general assembly ends in May. And then, so that's why we're showing that normally, the board has a good idea of what the estimated state revenue is, but this year's going to be different, so.
Okay. Thank you. That's the last slide.
Any further questions about the state aid before we move on to the next presentation?
I think, I just want to say thank you. I think this is really kind of a great deep dive into, you know, the number, might say it's going up, but what are the other things that kind of factor into it that, you know, sometimes in other counties might not be as impactful, I don't know if that's a word, but, but really can make a difference right here, because of the number of people we have, the number of things that we have to do, where we are in the blueprint schedule. But I think that was really helpful just to the public.
And the state pension shift, I think, might be a good topic for a future meeting, because I'm thinking it's going to be huge.
It is going to be huge, you know, it is, I mean, 21, additional 21 just this year is a huge commitment. And then, as our salaries keep increasing, you know, we're seeing the rate of the pension, you know, increasing substantially. I believe one year went up by 1%. So, it could have a significant impact in future years as well.
Great, thank you. So, we're going to move on to our next presentation, which is item 4.3, Staffing Allocations and Guidelines. And again, if the staff could introduce themselves when they get to the table, and I wanted to have this discussion, because since 90% of our budget is staff, we need to understand how, high level, just a high level, how the staff is allocated to our different types of schools. The Title I schools, focus schools, and non-focus schools. We often hear, oh, this part of the county gets more staff and resources than that part of the county. And so, I just want to kind of level set in terms of how are we using that 90% of our budget, and how is that reflected in our schools? So, with that, I'll pass it on to you.
And I just want to, I'll, I just want to indicate, so, yeah, let me, I'll introduce it, and then I'll pass it on. They're going to review K-12 staffing, and again, you know, there's still a special education, and there's EML students that are impacted as well. So, this presentation will concentrate on the K-12 staffing. But also, Dr. Taylor has given us the task of, we have to look at, as you've heard about our staffing standards. So, we are going to, what they're going to present is our current state and the state for FY '26. Moving forward, we are going to establish work groups that probably will start between March and April to look at staffing and what that means in the future for our schools. We're going to benchmark with other LEAs, and the work groups are going to include representatives from the finance team, this division of leadership, and as well our association members, you know, to make sure that we get a stakeholder input as we move forward. But the goal would be that when we present the FY '27 budget, you know, we can come up, you know, we have those standards established, and we can base our budget based on the new standards. Now, I'll pass it on to the team.
And also, the discussion around class size, I think Dr. Taylor wanted to have this work done before making any adjustments.
Correct. Making any adjustment to the class size allocations, yeah. Yes, absolutely.
Good evening, I'm Nicole Sasek. I'm one of the directors in the Office of School Support and Improvement. I'm joining Diane here to be able to support some of the practicality around, once schools receive their staffing, just to provide some examples, so you're able to become familiar with how they're using the staffing and the impact and the return on investment.
Good evening, I'm Diane Gomez. I'm the director of the Division of School Finance and School Support under the Office of Finance, and I will go ahead and start the presentation, and then, you know, we'll move on from there if you, for any questions. The first slide I wanted to talk about is just how we try to be, and again, focusing just on K-12 right now, because that's my role as far as applying for, just to give you a little bit of my role, I apply the formulas. I work with a lot of different offices. We're actually doing it this week to, to talk about what the formulas kind of put out, because we don't want to just rely on the formulas, because there's a lot of different stories at different schools. So, today, for example, we met with, with the Office of School Support and Improvement, with security, with counselors, counselor staff, because we were talking about certain positions, and we want to make sure we go school by school to look at each of those and make sure that we're being consistent. So, if I have one school, that's just like another. Not that they're going to have exactly the same, but that we should be able to answer that question of, you know, if we are like schools and we're different, why? And if we are like schools and we're the same, that's great, you know, because it's the same type of school. We also want to be very transparent to the principals, to the community, so we do put the staffing guidelines in our budget book from the very beginning. It's always Appendix C, and many of the positions are listed there for K-12. We also have some positions in there that are not K-12, like pre-K, just so we can have them all in one spot. And then, we, you will see some differentiation. So, we might have three schools, and I'm going to show this later on a slide, that are the same enrollment-wise, but they might have differences in, say, the students that are qualified for free and reduced meals, or the number of EML students that are in the building, things like that. And then, we do try to work very hard to be flexible with principals. So, if a principal has a grand idea and they want to try it, they'll bring that forward to, you know, appropriate people, and we might do some conversions of staffing to make that appropriate for that, that, you know, whatever they're trying to do. And also, let's say we, you know, we're trying to hire for their .2 teacher, and we can't find any candidates, but the class size is okay if we can have some parent support in that room. So, we might do a conversion. That's an example of doing a conversion as well. Thank you. So, I wanted to give an example of, this is at the elementary school level. We have three different categories in elementary school. We have non-focus, which are schools that for three or more years are below 35% for their FARMs rates. Focus schools for three, at least three years, they have maintained a 35% or more FARMs rate. And then, Title I, that's determined each year as far as the percentage. But I, these are three of our current elementary schools that are all pretty similar in size. You can see that across the top row. And then, you can see the difference in their FARMs rates. And then, underneath that, and I'm sorry it didn't line up properly, but underneath that, you will see different, these aren't all the positions that are in schools, but some of them that will change because of the type of school, or because the formula recognizes different FARMs rates. We might have tiered, tiered formulas to say, okay, if I'm between 0 and 20%, I get this much. If I'm 20 to 30, I get that, you know, so we do that as well. So, that allows you to see, let's just pick classroom teacher, for example. In a non-focus school, it's going to have fewer teachers, because the class size guidelines are higher. We staff focus and Title I classroom teachers the same. Where you'll see some difference in Title I is the additional funding they get from Title I, where the principals have decision-making, as far as if they want to add positions. There's guardrails, I'm not the expert in Title I, but there's guardrails, I'm sure, of what they can use the funding for. But a lot of times, you'll see them maybe get focus teachers to actually, and Nicole can talk a little bit about kind of how the staffing is used, but you'll see them, use them as classroom teachers to, so let's say their class sizes are meeting the guidelines, they're 18 in second grade, but they realize they need them to be a little bit smaller in second grade, they might add a classroom teacher. So, again, that is not my area of expertise, but it is additional funding. We just have to make sure we're not supplanting. So, I'm not going to say to a Title I school, oh, I don't need to give you that, those guidelines for focus, because you're, I know you're going to add more teachers. We have to make sure that we are staffing them just like a focus school, and some of our tiers go beyond that, so that we are not saying the Title I's going to cover what we're not giving, if that makes sense. Okay? So, at the bottom, you can see the Title I school has more staffing in just these areas. Again, this is not all the staffing that we have in elementary schools, but a big, big chunk of it. And we'll go to the next slide.
Ms. Sasek, were you going to jump in?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I can just provide a little bit more context around, for Title I example, right? So, in elementary school, one of the elementary schools that I have within the Gatorsburg cluster made a decision around adding a focus teacher with Title I schools. And many times, what principals do is they look at their trend data, performance data, and identify, there might be certain grade levels that haven't been making the same amount of progress academically. So, they would assign that focus teacher specifically to the grade level. So, I have one, for example, that's signed to fifth grade. Fifth grade specifically, the class sizes then look a little bit different, because they've decided to add additional teaching support there, and they're able to do their small group math interventions much more explicitly for the fifth graders, because that's where they have some trend data that they needed to be able to accelerate some of the progress and momentum as well. That could change then, the following year, if they say, our school data is now looking at, you know, our third grade, right? So, that focus teacher might ebb and flow, and the decision that they made within the Title I, it might not stay within that fifth grade. It might ebb and flow based upon when principals are making decisions because of responding to student data results.
And a folk, the word focus teacher just means a special intervention?
For the most part, yes. I think it's a broad, it's an umbrella term that's used, that then principals do have some of that autonomy to say, how is it going to be used? Because they've made that choice that particular year to use their Title I money to go ahead and also support additionally.
Okay. And is there any, do you go back and... And is there any, do you go back and, and return on investment? So they did that, made that decision. How do you reflect on, hey, this worked marvelously or it didn't work? What, how, what's that conversation look like?
So a conversation looks like for, for me, right, as a principal supervisor, we will sit down and as we go through supervisory visits throughout the year, we ask schools, I work very closely with principals, to say, well, you, you, you put this in place, you need to develop some of the oversight structures to then monitor and benchmarks over time. We say the supervisory visits throughout because if we say in the middle of the year or one quarter through that we're not seeing that return on investment, we work with principals to say, you need to make some adjustments necessarily in how you're using that person and the time that they're spending, or it might be who the students they're working with. So if there's students that, for example, in elementary school, when we look at their beginning of the year DIBELS data, and then we look at their middle of the year DIBELS data, if they're making progress and there's less students that they need to be able to continue to work, to support, then we will work with them to say, it's time to make an adjustment around where that focus teacher is spending time with, with different students. So we really look at it throughout the school year, similar to how we ask your principals to look at even just overall grade performance, right? Before even a quarter. Because at the end of a quarter, certainly if we, we don't want to just only look at the four quarters throughout the year, we want to look at it throughout.
And then the example you gave about the, the Gathersbury Elementary School where they chose to use a focus teacher, was that to create smaller, more classrooms with smaller class size or is it to go into the existing classrooms to provide the math and the small group math intervention?
Both. Usually it's used to go into classrooms because a lot of that model, to be able, the plug-in model specifically with our schools, that also do have higher EML students and there might, the plug-in support while the classroom instruction is still going on is where it's most advantageous. So if you think of it as far as you're having an additional teacher, so when teachers go into small group instruction, there is a second adult that's already provided there that can be designed during their collaborative planning.
Makes a lot of sense because I always wonder how teachers are able to deliver all those interventions when you have a room full of 20 students. We can go on.
Stuart. Yeah. I can go back or I can ask now. I see the reading initiative for the non-focus school. And so are the focus and the Title I schools just choose not to? Is that being absorbed somewhere else?
So that is driven by, we want the guidelines right now for reading classes in grade, this is just focused on grades one and two right now. This was an initiative the board brought forward early on, this is my eighth year, but early on in my time in this position, where they support the reading component for schools that have bigger class sizes than 20. So because our guidelines are at, they were at 18, they're now at 19 for the focus and the Title I schools, they already have class sections that are less than 21. So that's why you don't see it at the focus and Title I.
Actually, my child went to one of those schools and had the reading initiative teacher and I think when it very first started. And it did really help, but I just wanted, because it's blank on the other side, so I just figured we'd.
Yeah, it's a great point because there's, there's pockets of need all over the system.
Right. But the, yeah, the reading initiative guideline right now as it is, is, is to create reading classes that are under 21. And that's already evident in focus and Title I because the guidelines are under, under that. They're, not that that's the only reading support we have, there are reading specialists. We do have a reading support teacher right now for some of our high FARM schools, so.
Thank you.
So I, I did mention this already, that we do include these in, in the budget, operating budget book. It's in Appendix C, so that is something that, I, I didn't provide a link for that because we're doing the budget a little bit differently this year. But it is in your book, it's just the link won't go directly to Appendix C like it will when we get the next budget book. So the staffing guidelines, we will see changes with those as, as there becomes availability of, of money and also the changing needs of schools. And one example I will give is when I first started in this position, pre-K was not as big as it is now. And so many of our guidelines did K to 12, K to 12, you know, enrollment of K to 12. So, and that had a big impact on elementary schools. So if you only staffed for administrators with K to 12 or K to 5 and only staffed for counselors for K to 5, it caused, as pre-K started to expand, you might have a school that has 80 pre-kindergartners in their building, maybe not all at once because of half-day programs, but those numbers were not being included in the numbers when we were determining some of the positions. So that is one example of over time change because of the different needs in schools and the different makeup of schools. A majority of our staffing allocations are driven by formulas, but like what I said earlier, we don't like to just rely on what the formula spits out.
And if I may add, I think that's, that's some of the items that, you know, Dr. Taylor wants to look at in terms of establishing standard, staffing standards that are more, apply more evenly, obviously with delineations between focus schools, Title I schools and non-focus schools, but that it's, it's more, if your guideline is you, at the 26 student, you know, you get an additional teacher, then that's what will happen. So that's what we're looking for. Of course, there's a lot of work to be done in that area because we have been, like Diane mentioned, we have changed guidelines, you know, tweaks have been made, you know, to accommodate the changing needs of our populations and, and so on. But we really need to look at, at everything and, and really look at how we can change some of those outdated, you know, formulas.
Which is very exciting for me, so I'm really happy about this. So I did mention this earlier too, we, we call them staffing retreats, but when I said retreats, it made it sound like we were going to like the Eastern Shore for meetings and we're not. We're having them right here within MCPS. So, so we, we have staffing meetings where, and I mentioned this already, where we involve the people that have knowledge about the positions. So obviously I want OSSI to be a part of that because they are in schools and live it every day. They're in schools a lot more than I am just because it's, it's part of their daily work. But we do ask other offices to come and take part in these because they, you know, like I might not know as much about how many 504 plans are in an elementary school and, you know, I can look at the data, but what's the impact on the school? And where those that are working with counselors have that information. So we do like to involve, it's not something that's done in isolation. And it's always what I say to schools about master schedules, don't do it in isolation. So it's that same concept of getting the experts in there to help with that decision. And then it, obviously, you know, we had a lot of good discussions today in our first one and just hearing different people's points of view, advocating for schools, that sort of thing. And of course we monitor. So once staffing goes out, it will go out to principals the, in March. And at that time, they, they obviously need to make some decisions about staffing based on what they get. But we don't just give them the staffing and then it stops. We constantly, then we switch to monitoring. We go from projected enrollment to monitoring their actual enrollment because we're able to do that in synergy. And we keep an eye on that. I probably run reports weekly. We meet from March to September, sometimes every other week, but then it can be weekly as we get closer to the end of June. And we, I will provide data for them about, with the actual enrollment and then also comparing that to what they have in staffing. And then we can make adjustments, principals can make requests. We have a nice smooth process for that. And basically we make a recommendation as a team and then push forward those recommendations to Mrs. Alfonso Windsor for final decision.
And if I just made, this is something that Dr. Taylor has also mentioned in some of the meetings and as, it's not so much of an impact to K-12 because of the way enrollment projections are made, but all the other areas, looking at projections, not necessarily through September 30th because we know we get more enrollment throughout the, the year, to projections that maybe we account for December, you know, up to December or January. We have to really determine where that would look, how that would look like, but that is something that he really wants to explore as well, to make sure that we're budgeting for all those incoming students that we get throughout the year.
And I, I will add to that, that, you know, being in this position eight years, you tend to, to start to see the trends in different schools. You know, a school that you maybe the first couple of years pulled back a kindergarten teacher and then you were adding it back in August. And so I, I'm a real strong proponent of, of telling principals to keep historical data trends because you might have a school that gets 40 kindergarten enrollments in August where if we're looking at the enrollment in May, it's not going to be, you know, it's not going to reflect what really is going to happen. And so if that's consistently happening at a school, it's something that we keep in mind and also we, I encourage principals to hold on to that historical data as well because there's 206.
Yeah.
And I, I would add from a, from a school, what the school experience looks like, so when they get their staffing, principals get their staffing. And it looks a little bit different from secondary to elementary school. So an elementary school principal, you know, receiving their staffing, it's really necessarily by who are the students that are articulating to next grade level, fifth graders that are leaving, they make decisions necessarily like where teachers are going to stay with students or they need to shift because it might be your third grade class is your largest class of students together and now moving up to fourth grade. So you might need to have more teachers at the fourth grade level. So it's a little bit cleaner for elementary principals. Their decision-making is more around, like Diane shared, if they're a focus school, Title I school, what are the additional positions that they're going to shift, as you said, because of the, the data's looking different as they monitor throughout? And how are they going to necessarily add some other positions for certain grade levels? So things like how many are reading, with a reading initiative, where is that going to live and which grade level in response to the data? At the secondary level, it's really driven by students. And so where students are registering and they have just completed their registration at this point in time. So when students have done their course registration, that drives more where they're going to be allocating and moving their teachers. So how many teachers, how many students have signed up for certain courses? And that really drives as well as where their leadership teams have developed some guiding tenants. So guiding tenant for a secondary school could sound, for example, like we have a high number of EML students within our school population. So we are going to design our master schedule and make sure that we have the sufficient number of sections to support the English classes depending on their level as well as having electives. And we schedule that first. Another guiding tenant could be, we value that we know that we have our most vulnerable populations, that we want to be able to make sure our class sizes stay smaller. So we're making that decision as a team and we're going to have more sections available, smaller class sizes for certain courses versus maybe some of their other, other classes that they can still run them at 32, exactly where they are. So those are the decisions that secondary principals, principals go through as an example in meeting with their leadership team. Throughout then, as they might go through their numbers and they find that they might need to either ask for staffing, we have a process for that to go through the request. That process is formalized for them to make the request. They have to bring data attached to that as far as what's the justification for that staffing. And then directors, we will meet with them to go through their data and justification. Particularly it happens more intensely with our newer principals because it's the first time they're going through it. Our, our more veteran principals know their trend data. Newer principals haven't had that experience yet. And then, and then as Diane shared, as we look through the enrollments, we do have conversations as well around where, well, your enrollment projection, you're not at the enrollment where we projected and you're not, and we haven't seen that over time. So we do pull staffing and we do that early on and throughout so that schools, by the time they get to the summertime, are able to have a master schedule that's ready to go to receive kids.
Is there any differentiation for high schools in terms of more highly impacted schools versus not so much?
Yes, there, there are, so in categories, like the academic intervention is one category where there are schools that are highly impacted, that's one category, and their staffing that would be an increase at a highly impacted school versus one that's not. That gives high school principals some more flexibility around, because it's not attached to a specific content, so they have flexibility. We find more so, more recently, that that's used for math in that area as well. The other flexibility that exists within not just high school but secondary is they have resource teachers for the high school level where they're teaching within their content. At the middle school, they have content specialists that are by content, but middle schools also have team leaders. So how they use team leaders, most of ours, I think we're, all of them are now at, they have six team leader. Well, those are, those are some principal and leadership team decisions about where the needs are. So what they teach and who they support is very strategic. I can share one example, when I was a principal, like I had a team leader that specifically was also a math teacher. Team leaders come with a supplemental stipend as well as summer days. The decision to support math specifically was because we were then able to, the person was getting a stipend, was able to run some after-school math support that was free to students as well as during the summer, that teacher then was also assigned to run some summer boost courses because they were already factored into our staffing or allocations. And again, it was a free opportunity for students. So that becomes the principal autonomy around those decisions and flexibility that they can have.
Ms. Stuart? You mentioned supporting newer principals and I know we've had an influx. So two questions. Did that affect the stability in what you were doing in staffing, adding and removing or how you're planning? And is the trend becoming more stable? And also, your example of what you did as a principal, I mean, I presume some of that came with experience. So how are you advising newer principals to take advantage of getting the bang for your bucks?
So they, we'll start with the bang for your buck question. We do within our secondary schools specifically, and we do also coach within our elementary schools, but it's a little bit more detailed within secondary. We have master schedule reviews with them. So we have a format that we go through, you know, the series of questions to really, really interrogate some of the decision-making because even with a new principal, right, there may have been decisions that were made by the prior principal that might, might surface and might look different. And so when we go through that process of the master schedule review, that uncovers a lot of that as well. But part of what I do as a principal supervisor is through those coaching sessions, you know, to share the experiences with our new principals. I just sat with two of my new, I have three, three newer, two brand-new secondary principals. And we go through a lot of the examples and intricacies around how can you use some of that autonomy to make some of those decisions based upon responding to the data that you have. So the new principals really, it is important for principal supervisors to sit and have that conversation early on because timing of making those decisions is really important. I think your second question around new principals and.
With the stability in staffing, because you said it's helpful to know your trends, but if you're new, you might not always have as much information.
Yeah. And Diane has a lot of information, go ahead, because you share a lot of information too.
So a lot of times that is coming from, from us, you know, because if it's a new principal going into maybe that school I was talking about, I'm not going to try to pull the wool over their eyes and, 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 you know, we're going to, we're going to do what's right for kids and what's right for the school. I do keep some trend data, like kindergarten enrollment, for example, because that's kind of a little bit of an unknown, a little bit of an art, some of, some of a science. And so I will keep that data over time and have an average so that it gives us at least something to start with. So if right now they're only showing 55 students enrolled in kindergarten, but their average over time is 70, I don't want to make a decision on pulling at that time because their average is 70, unless there, it was involved in a boundary change, which is my favorite, because obviously the averages will start going down. because obviously the averages will start going down for that. But we, we also ask that principals, if they can, when they're coming in, and if they can still have a conversation with the former principal, to try to get that information as well. But there's a lot that we have kind of internally, whether it's in our head or it's on paper because we've been collecting it.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Thank you, hi. So I wanted to go back to the reading initiative teachers for a second. So it says, it's saying the for schools receiving additional staffing for class size reduction in grades one and two, is that including like our focus schools and our Title One schools? Because the other side of that is that our class size guidelines in Title One and focus schools are 25 in third grade and 27 in four and five, so that's over 21?
So the reading initiative is solely for grades one and two?
I see.
Yeah. Then a principal, if they feel they don't need it for grades one and two, we ask them to look at kindergarten. And that was a, that was a directive from the board.
Perfect, thank you. Just wanted to clear that up, it was like, wait, there's totally more than 21 kids in those classes. So I was also curious about, you know, we're talking about end of January for staffing, and that's, you know, projecting for the following year, that as we're projecting, if we're imagining that there's, you know, it's November and all of the fourth grade classes at a Title One school have 28 students, like is there a date that we say, oh, it's November 1st, it's too late, we can't give you additional staffing? Or we say, I can imagine that like if it were June 17th or whatever, that we would say no, no. But is there, do we have kind of a cutoff or at any point during the year?
So we don't have a cutoff. The only cutoff we have is we stop meeting weekly, usually by the end of September. But we, like recently, we've kept the form, the request form open until the end of December. And then we close it because the requests are really, really slowing down, it's almost to nothing. But we put a note on there that if you are experienced, you know, if you believe that you need additional staffing, please reach out to your director, you know, director directly. And then the director will work with me and with whomever, because sometimes the requests are for special ed and EML, we keep them within the same request form. And so we just make sure we get it to the right person to look at data. And those are more just onesie-twosie conversations. If we got a big influx, I'm sure we would meet together, but it really slows down.
Okay. I just, I don't know if it was rumor, but I'd heard before that there was a cutoff date. I know that a lot of educators at schools would be so relieved to hear that there's not a cutoff date, that they can apply that pressure.
I mean, the only time-
You know, I, obviously, I don't think anyone would say, let's disrupt all of our classes and at the very end of May, but that's still, I think, would use some minds to hear that. The last thing that I wanted to talk about was that we're about to completely change all of your trend data with an upcoming boundary change and study. I just wanted to kind of-
Good point.
Bring that up. And I don't necessarily have a question or a directive, but just to like bring it to the forefront of everyone's minds that this is, a lot of this work that we're talking about right now is going to be really different really soon.
So I've been through, I think, two, two to three boundary studies in this role, not as big as the one we're doing, but for example, Clark'sburg, I was involved with that. There's been a couple up in that area. And we basically have amazing folks that work in capital planning that can show us this group of kids, once it's decided where, where the boundaries are going to be, they can say, okay, here's a group of kids that were at this school, they're now going to this school. And that helps me, and also the demographers working with that person as well, it helps us all to know kind of where the kids are going to go. So yeah, it's going to be a lot of fun.
And if I could also add to your, your question around the rumors of like the cutoffs. So there's, there's different scenarios that also exist throughout the year. So there might be a school who puts in a request for, you know, let's go for a third grade and the guidance is at 25 and they currently have three teachers. And they have one class of 25, another class of 25, and then another kiddo has arrived, right? And now they have one class of 26. The request might come in and we might just pause on it because they have one student and so we don't want to, we're not looking to allocate a full teacher because there's one of the three classes that has one student over. And so we, and it depends on the grade level as well. So there's more likely we see trends in kindergarten and one that, you know, is throughout, but you know, third grade and increasing your third grade throughout, or getting more students rather, throughout that time, might not always happen. So sometimes what happens is they're paused until we kind of see some of the data. The other thing that happens is as we are going through those seasons that Diane shared that we might be pulling staffing, we are pausing until we're able to pull staffing from another school, to be able to bring that back into kind of the pot of, to be able to redistribute. So there are periods of time where we might pause to be able to make some of those other decisions or make some of those shifts.
And I do want to add to that. So as it gets later in the school year and they're asking for additional teachers, when those recommendations for additional staffing come to me, some of the questions are, so you might have, it's December and you're asking for an additional teacher, are you going to break it now? You have three classes of third grade, are you at this point going to separate them and put them into four classes? Because if not, then the staffing might look different, right? It might be just additional supports, you know, for those teachers. So those are the conversations and the considerations that we have later in the school year.
Thank you, I know we're running out of time. I consider this part one, so I'm happy to hear about the work group, what did you call it?
Yeah, there's going to be work groups for the staffing standards. So there's not so much, you know, perception in some ways, or you know, sometimes whoever advocates the loudest, we want to make sure that there's equity and there are real standards in staffing.
And as a follow-up, if we could get the formulas so we can see what the formula looks like, and I get it, it's not a hard and fast, but it would be helpful to see what that looks like for elementary and secondary.
Sure, so I can expand on what's in the guidelines if it doesn't have an exact formula in the guidelines. Like I'll give an example, focused, local focus teachers don't have the actual formula. I can give you what we're using. This year, we're still having conversations about next year, but I can certainly give you what we are using this year.
And have you, have you somehow documented the additional supports that like community schools get? Because they get additional staffing, right? Is that documented anywhere in the budget book?
So community schools, we, community schools work a little bit different because the funding we get for community schools, and they're changing the guidelines, you know, they're working to update some of their guidelines, cannot be used for academic supports, have to be used for wraparound services, and it's more about needs assessment. So every school has to complete an assessment of their need of their, of that particular school and determine whether, you know, they might need a parent community coordinator or they might need, you know, additional funding for field trips. So it's a little bit different for community schools because the funding cannot be used for instructional staff. MSDE is looking into that, I think that's part of the pausing because there's a lot of funding that goes for community schools that is not going for those academic achievements.
So that won't be in our appendix to the budget because it's kind of a-
Yes.
Non-academic intervention.
Yes, and it's more like, it's like Title One where, you know, it all depends on, you know, what the school needs assessments are. Yeah, it's not necessarily instructional, yes.
Ms. Stewart?
I'm looking forward to more information about the work group and if community members are going to be invited, because this is something we hear a lot from parents, especially class size across the board, but especially kindergarten is one hotspot I've noticed. So yeah, if we can get more information at some point, then I won't have to put it in for a resolution. That'd be great, thanks.
No, we will, we can come back to that again. We're looking to establish them by, you know, end of March, beginning of April, and then have the work completed by the summer so that we can bring the recommendations to the board and then to the budget.
That's great news, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for being here on a evening and looking forward to working with you in the coming year.
Same here, ditto, thank you for coming.
Yeah, you're welcome, you as well.
Okay, so we're almost there. Next item is our informational item, the semi-annual board expenditure report. Mr. Lockman, is there anything we need to know about this?
This is just an information item, is my understanding, is something that every six months comes to this committee as a, just as a printout of board office expenses.
Do we have that as a printout?
If it is not in the packets, it is on board docs, I will confirm that we have it. It isn't something that requires action, it is posted to board docs, I will make sure that we have copies.
We do have it?
Yes.
It is in there. It's the, it's got the blue coating on it.
Okay. Do board members have any comments or questions about that?
No.
Okay. All right. And just for closing, I wanted to, since we're kind of taking over this committee, I just wanted to get your thoughts as we plan the committee meetings for the upcoming year. If you have any feedback on topics that you'd like to see us consider as we plan for the upcoming year. Ms. Stewart?
I would like to dig in on our HVAC program, the way we pick how, when to replace HVAC systems, maybe the spending that leads up to that. Also, are, we have indoor air quality monitors in every classroom, how are we using that to guide repairs? Is that, do we see benefit in saving us some money there? Because then we're able to fix systems before it becomes chronic. Anyway, a general review and how we spend our money on HVAC and also looking forward, right, to how we should be, what's the cue, how it'll be coming up in future years and what community can expect based on funding that we have or don't have.
So maybe just to be sure that I'm clear as we think about things for the future, talking about both the HVAC program itself as well as HVAC and systemic renovations as a component of the overall capital budget, would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, yes, and just how are you making those decision processes? If we have to, you know, there's costs to delaying, you know, and so maybe trying to do some analysis there if we can.
Ms. Savanna?
Yeah, I would like to do a deeper dive into our pension and OPEB funds and with a, with a more of a fine tooth comb on what specifically we're sort of investing into and how that might align with, you know, what our standards are as an organization, as a school system in terms of the initiatives that we want to see put forward and really, really making sure that we're, we're investing in the things that as a school system, we also believe in.
Ms. Zimmerman?
I believe we've already talked about this in more in a budget context, but I'd like for us to explore what things, either federally or from the state, I suppose even locally, are kind of our unfunded mandates and where we're making up that funding, how much we're spending, all of that. I'd also like to see how much we're spending in like outsourcing of staff and services in MCPS and kind of dive into that and see what, what spending is going on there and all of that.
Okay.
Am I allowed a second?
Yes, go ahead.
I know that we only have so many meetings, so we can talk about how to prioritize later. But the other issue that comes up a lot is maintaining our fields and how we, where those expenditures come from. And I did ask this question before, the answers haven't come back yet, but for instance, I have heard that maybe the secondary fields, a student said that the students went out to weed the field. I'm just-
Must be a service learning project.
Yeah, so.
Okay, we will look into that. I'm interested in following up with the staffing standards work group and really focusing on return on investment of our, our staff. Ms. Savanna?
Yeah, I'm just going to go back to what I said before to provide some, a little bit more clarity. More specifically, you know, what we're doing in terms of like what our investments in private equity look like and how that relates to, again, what are, the impact of our money is doing out in the community at large, based on what our-
And we can always reach back to you if we need more clarity as we move forward. That concludes today's fiscal management committee meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
On favor, raise your hands. Meeting adjourned.